I'm going to call the meeting to order. Given to all board members and associated with the meeting dated November 11th, 2024. Furthermore, on that date, a copy of such notice was sent to The Times, the Trend Journal, and also posted on the bulletin board at the entrance to the boardroom in the Hamilton Square Administrative Building. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as.
Ms. Atwood, roll call.
Dr. Ferrar.
Dr. Ferrar will be a little late this evening.
Harvey?
Here.
Rakanja?
Here.
Dr. McSheen?
Dr. McSheen will also be a little bit late this evening.
Soto?
Here.
Here.
Fern?
Here.
Bellantano?
Yeah.
Here. So, before we go into executive session, I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit. This evening, we have some awards and presentations. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rocco.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. We're very excited to have our Leiler students here today. We do have some slides, I believe, so in a moment, we're also going to put the screen down. So for the board, you can use the back steps to come back around here, but I want to invite our principal, Jim Marinello, to the podium to introduce our students from Leiler School.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rocco. Good evening, members of the board and community. I'm excited and pleased to introduce two outstanding teacher leaders that we have at Leiler Elementary School. We have Mrs. Rosigliano and Ms. Sanchez. If you can come on up and join me. They have been instrumental in implementing a very engaging and effective program that we have here in Hamilton Township School District, first in math, as well as a math game called the 24 Game, and they have brought along some of our student champions that we're very proud of at Leiler Elementary. And in just a moment, they're going to introduce the students, but they have a few slides that they want to share as well.
We're going to come around.
Everybody's looking for a bow tie.
Hey.
Why can't I go down the stairs?
Because the steps are locked.
I could jump over them.
I know, they're locked.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amber Rosigliano. I'm the first in math teacher leader, as well as the 24 Club facilitator. We're starting off here with some kids from last year that were the grand champions. They received 10,000, or they earned 10,000 or more stickers on the platform First in Math. Mrs. Marinello purchased for us different color bands that signify different points they earned. They first earned a pencil with 1,000 points, followed by different points, like 2,000, 3,000, and up, and they earned each band. They were so excited, they played day and night, they ran home so they can get the next band for the next day. So those are some of our winners, all the way from second grade to fifth. Next slide. Yes, each sticker has three problems. You do the math. So here we have our first Leiler Lion, Alessio. Could you come up, Alessio? So Alessio was the top... The top winner of our school in second grade. As you can see, I purchased a large t-shirt because I assumed probably a fourth or fifth grader would be our winner. Uh-uh. A second grader stole the show with how many... How many stickers did you earn, Alessio?
15,000?
15,000! Give a big round of applause. Yay! Congratulations, Alessio. We appreciate all of your hard work. As some of you know, or you might be basketball fans, and you might enjoy March Madness. Last March, we did something with First in Math called Math Madness. And so what I did was calculate the stickers of each homeroom, and I did the brackets, which was a challenge, because there's a real system to that. And then each week, they versed a certain class, and they had a whole week to play. And then Monday morning, they received either the good or bad news if they were going to be moving on. So we did that for the whole month of March. They played an enormous amount. Their fluency... I mean, the teachers were saying, wow, my kids really are getting awesome at math fluency. It's moving into their regular math content. And our winner was fourth grade class, Mr. Mazuko's class. So that's just an example. He was unable to be here, but he did earn a pizza party and, I think, pencils or something, an extra recess. That's very big. It was a lot of fun. And here we go. I'd like to introduce the Core Four: Sienna, Joshua, Michael, and Peter. I have certificates for them. I'll give it to you in a second. So these fourth graders are called the Core Four because last year in third grade, they learned the game 24 so quickly, which meant they had to use multiplication, division, addition, and subtraction to solve the problems. And they did it tournament style, which meant they did the last equation first. So they may have said... Do you want to give an example of what would be the last equation?
Eight times three equals 24.
And that's how they would say, eight times three equals 24. And they would then tell how they, you know, came to the eight, came to the three, and then... So they worked backwards. And they were only in third grade. They were so good that I had to have them work with fourth and fifth grade. And they were all amazing, but Sienna beat every student that she played, and she earned the most points. So congratulations to Sienna. We're going to award her this medal. But they all did a phenomenal job, and they will be going around the school and teaching all the third graders this year, any fourth grader that's new to our school, and our fifth graders. So thank you so much, Core Four. You're absolutely amazing.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cassandra Sanchez. I am the third grade teacher at Leiler, and I'm also math teacher leader this year. We put together a video showcasing our students using First in Math in the classroom and how we incorporate that as teachers. And so I'm just going to play the video now, and so you can see a little snippet of how it looks like at Leiler. Hi, I'm Cassandra Sanchez. I'm the third grade teacher here at Leiler, and I'm also math teacher leader. First in Math is pretty much games that students can play. It's very interactive. It's on their Chromebooks, so it's encouraging that technology use in the classroom. All teachers here at Leiler use it as part of our centers after our mini lesson, and it just helps to enrich students in those fluency skills that maybe aren't touched upon in our lessons. So it's a great opportunity for students to use technology and to practice all those math skills. The bulletin board is a way of us tracking our school's progress with First in Math. It's a way of encouraging our students to see how many stickers we've gathered as a class, how many problems we've solved as a school, and really just, again, make it competitive and fun for the students.
Good morning, Leiler Lions. I'm Alex Housar from 3S, and I have a special First in Math announcement. Our player of the week is... Drumroll, please. Isaiah Stubbs from Mrs. B's class.
Every month, we have a challenge through First in Math that we give out to our students, and the top players are displayed on the bulletin board. We also acknowledge the team of the month and the player of the month, just to keep the kids encouraged and help them to enjoy First in Math.
Five times four equals forty. Twenty plus forty equals twenty-four.
24 is an interactive, competitive game for our students.
Eight minus four equals four. Four plus two equals six. Six, I'm sorry, equals twenty-four.
They use their mental math skills in multiplication, addition, division, subtraction, and they have to use the numbers on the card to come up with the number 24. So it really encourages them to use that mental math and practice even accuracy.
My favorite thing about 24 is that it's really competitive for me, and I love math. I would highly recommend this game to math lovers.
It's a multiplayer game, so instead of 1V1ing someone, you can play in groups of four, three, five, any type of group. And even adults would like to play these games.
My favorite thing about 24 is that it's really competitive, and I'm a really competitive person, and I love math. And I have a great reaction time, and you need a great reaction time to solve problems.
My favorite thing about 24 is that a lot of people can play until six people. And to me, it's fun to play because you can get a lot of points. You can get a lot of reactions. And you can get a lot of points. And that's my favorite part of 24.
24 is also available through the First in Math program on their Chromebooks, but it is nice for the students to be able to have that tactile card right in front of them and to be able to compete with one another.
Six minus two equals four. Four minus one equals three. Eight times three equals twenty-four.
So this is the second year that we are using First in Math. Last year was very successful, and we're very excited to continue it in our school and our district this year. I know that they're practicing their fact skills while in school in a way that's fun and keeps them engaged. So I love that there's now something available for me to use in the classroom and not something I have to search for. It's right there, available for them through clever. I am hoping that this is something that's continued in the district. The students really enjoy it, and the teachers do as well. So two years going strong, and we're excited to see where it leads us in the future.
All right, thank you both so much, and congratulations, Leiler students, and thank you, parents, for joining us tonight as well. Are there any questions or anything, Dr. Rocco?
Yeah, so I'm going to come up here and congratulate everybody who performed hard work. Great job. Oh, yeah, one other education before I'm going to get to our Hamilton Educational Foundation. It's always very gracious with grants for our teachers. They offer great stuff here. So I'd like to invite a... Stanka?
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. Thank you. My name is Angie Belmont. I am currently the secretary of the Hamilton Educational Foundation. On behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, we are thrilled to offer grants to the teachers. And the first nine grant awardees are here with us this evening. Mr. Tasco is going to come up first and hold the big check that we have. We are giving out this evening $13,048 for our first round of award winners. So it's an ongoing system. So any teachers that are here or watching this on TV, we welcome you to submit... Keep submitting your grants until we run out of money. So our first award winner from Steiner High School is Mr. Dominic Tasco. Next, we have Karen Poria from Grace Middle School. Megan Atwood from Morgan Elementary School. Kristy Rafini from Scion Elementary School. Wendy Belent, also from Scion Elementary School. Rebecca Bingaman from Grace Middle School. William Leonardo from Scion Elementary School. Bill's wife, Caitlin Leonardo, is also an award winner from Langtree. Let's have the whole Leonardo family come up here. Melissa Bra Kelly from Klockner Elementary School. Rachel Handel from Scion Elementary School. Thank you all for submitting. We look forward to seeing pictures and articles about how the grant money was used in your classroom, and feel free to write another one next year. Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'm going to go. Stop.
It's okay. No, 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 you're okay. I'm sorry.
I know.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I'm the second grader. One more, right? Alessio?
I'm going to go to the exact...
I know.
Stay down there.
He can stay down there if he wants to.
He's talking to him. Better than all the fourth graders. The Core Four. Love them.
Okay, thank you, everyone. At this time, if I can please have a motion to go into executive session. Second. Aye. Whereas NJSA 10:4-13 requires adoption of the board to go into executive session, be it resolved that the board pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, New Jersey, Title 18A, and the Hamilton Township Board of Education Bylaw, Number 0166, hereby enter executive session to discuss a matter involving student matters, labor matters, and matters falling under attorney-client privilege. Be it further resolved that the minutes of this executive session shall be made public following formal action by the board and/or, at the conclusion of any investigation, due process proceeding, or litigation, so long as not prohibited by law and so long as the need for maintaining confidentiality no longer exists.
We are going to room 105, which is right by the main office.
Evening, everyone. I have just a few items here. Tonight, I want to start my report with a difficult topic here, but I'm going to ask everybody in attendance tonight to join me in a moment of silence for a student at Grace who passed away in between our meetings. Leon Phillips was a Grace student who passed away recently, so if you wouldn't mind joining me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I know you all have Leon's family in your thoughts during this time. Thank you very much. Just a reminder to our community, we have a mobile app. It's in the Google Play Store and the Apple App Store, so please download it to get information, and it has push notifications, so when we actually put out a newsletter or some information that we're trying to get across to the district, it'll come right to your phone now on the app. A few meetings that are coming up. Our next Special Education Parent Advisory Group will be held on January 13th. The topic is IEP Process: Interpretation in Services. It will be at Crockett Middle School at 6:00 PM. Our DCR Committee will meet on December 10th. That's at 5:00 at Scion Elementary School. We have a PTA President's Meeting, Monday, November 25th, at 7:00 PM at Grace Middle School. Couple other items. Each high school is hosting a Senior Success Week this year. There have been a variety of activities to meet the post-secondary goals of all students. These activities include an overview of school links, visits from military recruiters and tech schools, a Mercer County Community College presentation, a bus trip to Rowan, Insta Decision Day with Ryder, as well as assistance with college applications, essays, and financial aid. Our first One Hamilton College and Career Event was a college admissions panel hosted by Nottingham High School last night. Be sure to mark your calendars for the next future events, which include Post-High School Planning Night, Tuesday, February 11th, at 6:30 right here at West, and our College and Career Fair, Tuesday, April 1st, at 6:00 PM at Steinert. Families from all high schools are encouraged to attend each of these events. So I just want to make that clear. want to make that clear. Even if we're holding it in a high school that your student doesn't go to, all high school students are invited to participate. Couple other calendar reminders for you. November twenty-seventh is a one-session day for all students. That means that all students in the district will be dismissed early. November twenty-eighth is our annual Thanksgiving Day football game between West and Steiner. This year, Steiner will host at ten-thirty. This is the sixty-sixth game. Series record, because somebody always asks me at the table, is West thirty-seven wins, Steiner twenty-seven wins, and one tie. Schools close November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for the Thanksgiving break. And finally, I want to wish everybody in our school community a happy Thanksgiving. Let's continue to work together, keep a positive mindset, stay focused on doing what is right by all of our students, and make every day count in our district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rocco. At this time, I'm going to move on to Board of Education members. I'm actually just going to go around. Dr. McSheen, is there anything that you would like to report?
Yeah, just briefly, I had the privilege to attend the twenty-twenty-four workshop for New Jersey School Boards Association last October twenty-first through twenty-fourth. Unfortunately, I ended up having to do a lot more work for my job than I wanted to, so I missed a few key sessions, but I know a few board members here were able to attend a few more, so it was great kind of catching up with some other school board members and hearing a little bit about what their towns are experiencing, and maybe our fellow board members who were there can offer a few more ideas about what they heard. The main session I, one of the main sessions I did get to attend, I know Ms. Soto is with me as well as Ms. Byrne, and it was about a, an approach that a middle school district, as in a district that was based, that was just, sorry, a high school, a high school district. Is it middle school or high school? I forget. It was high school, right? Okay. A way that they used, they approached grading their students and reporting out by report cards, and it was interesting that, you know, they looked at what their needs were for the whole school, and it was a small school, it was a fairly affluent school, so things didn't necessarily apply one-to-one, but it was good to understand what the needs were for that district and kind of think about how we can look at that for ours.
Thank you, Dr. McSheen. Ms. Soto?
Just to echo Dr. McSheen's comments, I did have the opportunity to attend, very grateful to the district for allowing us to continue our professional development in this area, and it was exciting to see what other districts are implementing, and really also, I think, affirming everything that's going on in our district. We are, I think, leaps and bounds ahead of many others, and I'm very grateful to be in a district that's constantly looking at our processes and procedures and looking for ways to improve upon things.
Dr. Farrar?
Good evening. I don't have any announcements, other than to say, anybody in Pennsylvania who complains about jug handles needs to remember they have four- and five-way intersections, which I've traveled for the last five days, but I'm glad to be here.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes, I, like Ms. Soto and Dr. McSheen, was able to attend the NJSPA Conference in Atlantic City. I did just want to review with the board some of the different workshops that I was able to go to, including Special Education Law, Mental Health for Teachers and First Responders within education, Behavioral Disorders, and the School-to-Prison Pipeline, and something that I found interesting, which I do feel our district does do a lot to address, but we were able to learn more about some of the barriers and reasons behind it, misconceptions, was a workshop on chronic absenteeism. So I did also want to thank the district and the board for allowing us to go there and now use what we did learn to implement and help the district.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Ms. Harvey?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the district for organizing Parents' Day for the elementary students yesterday. I got to go to Langtree, and Mrs. Clonak will be very happy at what I observed, that my daughter's fourth-grade class uses cursive writing to, it was the message for the students and to the parents was written in cursive, so it was a great experience to go in as a parent to see what the students do during the day. Thank you. And I have the update from the PTA President's Meeting. Do you want that now? Please, go right ahead. The, as the board representative to the PTA President's Committee of the district, we met on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four at Wilson Elementary School. They were gracious hosts and actually provided dinner. The, there was a guest speaker from Shine and Inspire, which is a local nonprofit organization. I wanted to highlight their work because they have supply closets in sixteen of our Hamilton schools where they go ahead and collect items for those in need, including hygiene items. They rely upon donations. You can bring donations to collection boxes throughout the district, so they're not actually at the schools for the donations. Those are at places like Blend, Corello's, Outside the Lines, and other community places where you can go. The organization, in addition to ensuring that people in need have basic needs like underarm deodorant, socks, they also have twice a year a program where they bring a hundred needy kids to the Nottingham Ballroom, and they try to give them a fun experience, but also give them things that they need, like a full backpack. So I just wanted to highlight that organization for those who want to bring donations to those community centers and check out Shine and Inspire. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Harvey. Mr. Salantana?
Amen.
Ms. Byrne?
So, like some of my colleagues, I also attended the School Board Workshop for Mandatory Training, and there was a lot of interesting classes, and we talked a little bit about that. As a liaison for the VOTEC, I attended the Advisory Luncheon on October twenty-ninth. As usual, there was a delicious meal that was prepared by the culinary students, and they were kind enough to give me this flower, which was, yeah, this was made by the graphic design class, and I thought that was really beautiful. They had them all over the room for decoration. Wegmans was awarded the twenty-twenty-four Business Partner of the Year, and there are many new opportunities for learning, including an Allied Health Services Program, which was previously the pre-nursing, but now it can be used for other careers in the healthcare department. There's also many programs of shared time, so students can finish their high school classes and participate in programs as well. I was also invited to the Veterans Assembly at McGaughy, and once again, it was a stellar program that was put on to acknowledge and thank our veterans. Many thanks to Mrs. Morales for the invitation, and a shout-out to the kids and their McGaughy pride and their good behavior.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Mr. Kanka?
Yes, I did, I did attend the meeting for the Hamilton Education Foundation on November the fourteenth, and as you, as everybody tonight saw, they handed out a lot of money to some of our well-deserving teachers who wrote a lot of grants, and we're really appreciative of the, of what they, what they've accomplished and what they're going to accomplish in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. So I had attended the CPAG meeting, which is our Special Education Parent Advisory Group, this past Monday. Span had given a wonderful presentation in regards to the process of IEPs, which is, which was very resourceful, and I believe will be able to access on the website, but it was just a wonderful presentation, and I would like to thank Ms. Audino and her team, as well as our community members and parents that attended and volunteer for that group. It's a wonderful group, and I always say, if you have an opportunity to come out, please do so. This last meeting, we actually had it streamed, so the presentation did have access virtually, so it was a wonderful opportunity. So I want to thank you all for that.
Madam President, I'm sorry. I actually do have an announcement. Clockner Elementary School is organizing meals for one hundred families. They, of this afternoon, were short twenty-five. We've had, let's see, ten, eleven, we've had twelve people come forward to donate turkeys. If anybody else is willing to donate, you can either reach out and email me, or you can email Dr. Monroe, and they will be very appreciative if we can beat that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. At this time, I'm going to move on to our student representatives, and I will start with Ms. Cameron Mooney from Hamilton West.
Hi. So first, I want to start with the haunted house that West held on October twenty-fifth. It was very successful. We had over twenty rooms that participated in different decorative Halloween characteristics. We had a bunch of kids come, and we made over a thousand dollars in profit, so it was a really fun night. West's PTA is holding a craft fair this Saturday. We have a bunch of different vendors coming, so we feel free to come to that because we think it's really fun. Our Spirit Week for Thanksgiving starts tomorrow. We're starting off with a fun theme, Character Day, so we hope to see lots of West kids in different character costumes. Our pep rally is this coming Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. We're very excited. We have lots of fun Wacky Races that we are planning to do, followed by our Thanksgiving game against Steiner, so. And last thing, one of our juniors, Diamond Tran, she has a nonprofit organization called You Know Yourself, and she is holding a donation drive that's collecting hats, gloves, and socks for people in need, so anyone in West, we highly suggest that you, if you can, donate, because we feel like this is a really good organization that could help a lot of people in need. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I will, Lanaya Odom from Nottingham?
Hi. To start, our PTSA held their first vendor this Saturday.
Sorry, can you move closer to the microphone?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Like this?
Yeah.
Well, to start off, our PTSA this Saturday, or sorry, last Saturday, had their first vendor. It was extremely successful. It was in our cafeteria. We're just very appreciative for our PTSA. We just, I feel like a lot of people don't get the appreciation that they deserve. So in journalism class, I helped create something called, hold on, because there's a lot of S's, Staff Spotlight Saturdays, where we make Canva posts on Instagram to honor our PTSA or our staff members. Just ask a few fun questions to get to know them and make them feel loved and respected because they are people, and we need to see them for who they are. Sorry, moving towards the extracurriculars, it's a weird period right now, November, because we're going into winter and fall is now over. For fall time, our, both of our soccer teams, our boys and girls, made it to state championships, which was amazing. Our fall, I believe, our cheerleaders won first place this year in their award, which was a beautiful thing to watch. So. Winter sports now, we're done with our fall. Winter sports, everybody's getting ready for, I believe our first game is the ninth. I'm not sure what sport it is, but I know that it starts the ninth. It's a very critical time for everybody inside of a winter sport extracurricular. Everybody's moving and grooving, man. I don't really know what else to say on that one. Today is our Fall Sports Awards, however. It's happening as we speak. I believe it started at six o'clock today, so that's great. Little Shop of Horrors is our show this year. Our cast list is finally made. Everybody's extremely excited. Now everybody's working on production. Our art crew is getting, getting down and dirty. It's just, it's great. And on spontaneous note, Dr. Rocco came to our school today. He talked to our gallery and our AP Government and Politics class. We really picked his brain, which showed how many critical thinkers we have at Nottingham. It was a very fun thing to watch and to witness and to be a part of. Yeah, we were just forty, fifty minutes, just going at it, but yeah, that's it for Nottingham. Good stars.
Thank you very much. And now, Gino DiNatale from Steiner?
Good, sorry, good evening. So today started our first day of Spirit Week here at Steiner. Spirit Week will go until next Wednesday. Today was Pyjama Day. Tomorrow is Class Color Day. Friday is Anything But a Backpack Day. Monday is Jersey Day. Tuesday is Character Day, and then Wednesday is Class, or Spirit Day, excuse me. Then our boy soccer last Friday competed in the Central Jersey Championship. Although we lost, we also hosted the game at Steiner. November fourth, Rachel's Challenge was a, is a club here at Steiner we adopted. It's basically just to commemorate and to tribute to someone who, a girl named Rachel, she lost her life in the Colombian shooting in nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. So this club is to honor her and to just spread kindness throughout the community, which we are working on right now. Our Thanksgiving game versus West is at Steiner next Thursday. Our winter sports are starting up as well. Our musical cast list has come out for our chorus line, and now they are rehearsing. Last, last week, we hosted our third annual multicultural night. It was November fourteenth. It was a really big hit as well. And then tonight, well, this morning was an academic awards. Basically, some people who got over three point seven-five for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year were honored with a Bigel Breakfast as well as award, and people who achieved a three-point-five GPA over the last three years have been invited to a award show tonight as well. Wacky Races is tomorrow. It's basically just a big obstacle, basically a race against all the classes. Each student competes in different obstacles, and it's really fun to watch as well. Our pep rally is next Wednesday, or next Wednesday, yes. It's really fun, really peppy, if you will. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Similar to Wacky Races, but the teachers are more involved. Our food drive, we are organizing Thanksgiving Day baskets for families in need of, for this Thanksgiving holiday. And then last week, we had a volleyball tournament, so that team who won that will compete against the teachers at the pep rally, which is always fun to watch. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As always, it's always great to hear from our student representatives. It is now November, so we've been in school for three months, and it's just great to hear of all the great things that are going on in our high schools, and I thank you all very much for being part of the board and for bringing us all this great information. So thank you. Okay, so we are going to now go on to presentations and awards. We do have two other presentations that we have this evening. We did have two of them prior to executive session, so I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Rocco.
Thank you very much. We're going to have two presentations. One is a, is a recorded presentation tonight. Unfortunately, Mr. Scotto was unable to be here tonight, but he is going to, you're going to hear as the first presentation, the State Assessment Scores presentation, and then Dr. Altobello is going to give our biannual presentation of the SSDS. Now, to make that happen, we are going to have to bring the screen down, and I'm going to have to ask you to walk back down into the audience, and you can go down the steps here or on the side. So we're going to bring down the screen and set up the video presentation, and then Dr. Altobello will do the other presentation live.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Scotto, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And this evening, I will be presenting the 23-24 assessment results for the district. This evening's presentation will show the following. Math and ELA data from the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments that we administered in the spring of 2024. District growth from previous year state assessments. District Benchmark Assessment growth from our internal benchmark assessments that we administered during the 23-24 school year. PSAT data for grades nine, 10, and 11, which we administer in October. Advanced Placement AP scores from our May administration of 2024. And last, an outline of steps that we have taken and continue to take to address and enhance performance. Before we begin, we'd like to point out where our students were in March of 2020, when COVID-19 began. Our current seniors were in seventh grade. 11th grade students were in sixth. 10th grade students were in fifth. 9th grade students were in fourth. 8th grade students were in third. 7th grade students were in second. And our 6th grade students were in first. 5th grade students were in kindergarten. And our students that are currently in grades four, three, two, one, or kindergarten were either in preschool, at home, or very young. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment is scored on five levels, one being the lowest and five being the highest. One represents that the students did not meet expectations. Two means that the students partially met these expectations. Three, approaching expectations. Four, meeting expectations. And five, exceeding. This slide represents how our students did on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments in the spring of 2024. The bar graph that you see on the left represents English Language Arts. And the bar graph that you see on the right represents mathematics. The lightest purple color in both bar graphs represents the percent of students that did not yet meet expectations. The slightly darker purple represents partially met. The next darkest represents the percent of students that were approaching expectations. The darkest purple represents the percent of students meeting expectations. And the color that almost looks like a dark blue or black represents the percent of students exceeding expectations. Our New Jersey Department of Education requires that we also report our subgroup data, similar to subgroup data that the community would see on performance reports. This subgroup data represents the percents that we just talked about for students falling within the following categories: Asian, Black, African-American, Hispanic or Latino, White, two or more races, Students with Disabilities, Multilanguage learners, and other demographics such as economically disadvantaged or non-economically, economically disadvantaged. For the last few months, several members of this senior leadership team, as well as other central office leaders across the state, have been in conversations with the New Jersey Department of Education, advocating for a growth formula, a growth model that will allow us to more effectively measure student performance and achievement. We've had some success with the Department of Education, and we anticipate for this year, not only for CUSAC purposes, but for other student performance purposes, we will be able to report out on how our students grew over a period of time. We have chosen to use our internal benchmark assessments, which are standards-based and aligned to the same standards that are measured on the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments to indicate growth. In our elementary division, we administer the I Ready Assessment in the fall, the winter, and the spring. The grade levels are listed on the left-hand side of the screen. And on the right-hand side of the slide, that percent represents the percent in the cohort that met or exceeded typical growth. Typical growth is defined as improving at least one grade level, if not more, over a period of time. We also administer the I Ready Assessment in Mathematics. The layout of this slide is very similar to the previous slide, with the grade levels that were assessed throughout the year. And on the right-hand side, the percent that met or exceeded the typical growth. We also administer benchmark assessments in the middle school division. And while we do not use the I Ready platform currently in Mathematics, last year, we used the HMH Waggle program, which is a standards-based program, online assessment, very similar to I Ready. Students in grades six, seven, and eight also sat for these assessments throughout the year. What's noted on the right-hand side of the slide is the percent of the cohort that met or exceeded typical growth. As you know, we have a robust accelerated middle school math program in the district, where many of our students are able to not only take high school, I'm sorry, not only take grade six, seven, and eight mathematics, but also given the opportunity to take high school-level mathematics before graduating from eighth grade. Those two courses that we run are in Algebra I and Geometry. This is how our middle school students did in terms of the percent that met or exceeded the typical growth. We administer Lincoln Assessments, which are also very similar to I Ready and standards-based and online in grades six, seven, and eight. The percents noted on this chart, again, represent the percent that met or exceeded the typical growth. We also administer benchmark assessments in high school. And while they may not necessarily be noted by grade, they are often noted by course. We do not administer benchmark assessments to our soon-to-be graduates, but we do administer to students that are in English I, II, and III. These percents that you see noted on the right-hand side of the screen represent the percent that met or exceeded the typical growth for the high school ELA benchmark assessment. Same applies in high school mathematics. It is not necessarily by grade, but students that are taking Algebra I, Geometry, or Algebra II also sit for a standards-based assessment that is administered online. And these percents that you see on the right-hand side also show the percent met or that exceeded typical growth. Switching gears, as you know, we administer the PSAT test to students in grades nine, 10, and 11. The center column represents the average score that those students earn in the fall-October administration of the PSAT test. On the right-hand side, or the farthest column on the right, you will see if there was an improvement from the prior year. 9th graders do not take the PSAT in 8th grade. Therefore, there is nothing to report. However, as you can see, our 10th grade students and our 11th grade students did improve from the prior year. AP continues to expand and be a very positive opportunity for students prior to graduation. Last year, we administered 1,063 exams. The highest score that you can get on an AP exam is a five. The numbers that you see in the respective columns indicate the number of exams that were scored as a one, a two, a three, a four, or five. Colleges, not all, but many, will take a score of a three or higher, where students may earn college-level credit or be able to accelerate their coursework upon entrance into school. Last year, about 40% scored a three or higher, and we saw approximately a 6% increase in the number of students scoring a three or higher. 46%, to be exact. For the first time, our district was also recognized for 16 Hamilton Township School districts that did quite well on the AP exam, falling into the category of African-American, Black, Hispanic, American, Latino, or first-generation college student. Our data is very important to us. How our students do is very important to us. And also, the steps that we take once we find out the results are just as important. These next few slides will highlight some of the steps that we have taken or continue to take in various parts of the district. In the elementary division, we've added additional ESL staff. We have restructured our basic skills program. We've adopted a new K-5 math series. We are in year two of our Hegerd assessments. We've expanded Orton Dillingham across the grades and increased the number of teachers who have received the OG training. Our MTSS program, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, has also expanded into mathematics. We continue to provide before and after-school tutoring. Last year, with remaining ESAR funds, we were able to secure in all 17 elementary schools push-in academic in-class tutoring using an outside vendor. With Title III funds, we were able to continue with ESL tutoring. And with a mix of local, state, and federal funds, provide summer tutoring for our students as well. Some additional steps we've taken in the elementary division. We are in year two of our First in Math program, where students are able to practice fact fluency and have some fun with gaming at the same time. Teacher leaders continue to play a very important role in our district in leading, assisting, and providing support for all staff. Virtual grade-level meetings, where teachers have an opportunity to come together and discuss curricular topics, standards, and review data. And a continuation of our family reports on how our students are doing on our benchmark assessments. So families are receiving more than just state assessment report mailers and report card information each year. The Office of Counseling is also in year one of the Wayfinder program. In the middle school division, we have also continued with before, during, after-school tutoring. Last year, we launched our first summer school program, and we are currently in the process of assisting students mid-year who may need some assistance in what we call course recovery. In some of our schools, using Title I funds, we've also been able to do some academic push-in. For the last several years, for exiting 8th graders transitioning into 9th grade, we've run a Jump Start to Algebra I program. Last year, we started mailing home benchmark family reports to middle school families as well, so they have an additional source of information about their child's performance. We have a new high school math series, and we are using those textbooks also in our middle school Algebra I and Geometry program. The Office of Student Services has expanded the MTSS program and are in year-one implementation for English Language Arts in the middle school division. In high school, we have adopted a new math series, new textbooks and resources in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. We continue with our summer AP Jump Start programs and AP Potential Assemblies, before and after-school tutoring. And in some of our schools, using Title funds, we've been able to offer academic push-in as well as bilingual push-in. Last year, we piloted the elimination of Level B. And collaboratively, in central office and in building leadership, we have decided to completely eliminate Level B and have a more standard college prep honors AP level of courses. We have new textbooks in some other departments for other programs. We are also sending home benchmark family reports. As many of you know, we will be implementing a block schedule in September of 2025. And we are deep into that block scheduling initiative with training and support for our staff. We recently expanded our dual enrollment opportunities, so students have more opportunities prior to high school graduation. Finally, at the district level, ESL tutoring continues across grades K through 12. Staff are provided with monthly curricular newsletters. Parents are receiving digital family resources. The Office of Special Education has adopted and implemented some new curricular resources and programs. Our superintendent of schools holds monthly meetings with principals to review data connected to student achievement, chronic absenteeism, and other goal-setting. Pop-up schoolhouses continue to be a great opportunity for us to engage with the community. Our four-year new teacher induction program continues to be very strong and robust in providing our newest hires with the support that they need. Our high-quality professional development continues to be very strong during district and services, after-school voluntary sessions, as well as summer learning. We feel that our family notification of math and ELA benchmarks is just one other way to continue to keep people in the loop so they are familiar with how their child is doing and continue to be a partner. Every day counts in Hamilton Township, and we know that our work is not done. We will continue to work hard every day for the benefit of all students. I thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is...
Okay, thank you, everybody. We are required by law to report two times a year on the SSDS. And what the SSDS is, it stands for the School Safety Data System. This came out in 2017, 2018 school year, and it collects, requires every school district in New Jersey to submit data on incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse offenses, HIBs, to the state of New Jersey. And then we're required two times a year to present to the public and to the board. The first time that we present, it's really just on a small snapshot. It's the first half of the year. And then the second time that we present is a full year. And what you're going to see tonight is a full-year comparison of year-over-year data for the Hamilton Township School District. First, we'll talk about the elementary division. So I think it's important. I always like to frame it so that everybody has an understanding. In the elementary division, we have 5,498 students. And if you look at this, if you're looking at the black columns, that was the 22-23 school year. And the yellow columns are the 23-24 school year. So I want to bring a few things to your attention that we're proud of. Incidents of violence are down 12% in the elementary division. Any incident involving substance possession or use is down 33%. Confirmed HIBs in the elementary division are down 30%. Alleged HIBs, so those are HIBs that were alleged that were found not to be harassment, intimidation, and bullying, are down 40%. Total incidents in the elementary division are down 22%. HIB trainings, so the trainings that we do with staff and students, are up 25%. And HIB programs are up 19%. That's good data. So this is your secondary division. This is every student grade six through 12. There are 7,257 students. Again, what you're seeing, the black columns, 22-23. The gold columns, 23-24. Some important information. Incidents of violence in the secondary division are down 38%. Incidents of vandalism are down 29%. thirty-eight percent; incidents of vandalism are down twenty-nine percent; substance issues are down ten percent; incidents involving possessions of weapons is down sixty-two percent; confirmed HIBs are down seventeen percent; alleged HIBs are down fifty-two percent; total incidents at the secondary division are down thirty percent; and HIB programs are up forty-three percent. The last slide that I'm going to show is a full-on district, so the entire district, all divisions. Again, the columns in black are twenty-two, twenty-three school year; the columns in gold are the twenty-three, twenty-four. Just some highlights: incidents of violence in this district are down thirty-three percent year-over-year; incidents of vandalism are down fifteen percent year-over-year; incidents involving substance are down eleven percent year-over-year; incidents of weapons are down thirty-five percent year-over-year; confirmed HIBs are down twenty-three percent year-over-year; total incidents are down twenty-eight percent; HIB trainings are up twenty-eight percent; and HIB programs are up forty-three percent. Now, this, it's important to note that this is not, the, these results are not just from the year of one work, or from one person, or from one office. This is a district initiative that we have to give credit to the board for being willing to join with us when we recommend things like bringing in outside security, or bringing in weapons detection systems, or changing or enhancing our code of conduct, because they're having meaningful impact on what we're doing inside of the schools. When I met with the principals last week, one of the things that I said to them is that this is a testament to their work. The administrators, the guidance counselors, the teachers, and the students are the ones who are making this happen. It doesn't have anything to do with me as the director of administration or anybody else who is sitting up here. It has everything to do with the people, the boots on the ground, the people who are in the schools, working with students, and the parents who have partnered with us to make this happen. This year-over-year data is exceptional. We are extremely proud of it, and I certainly want to extend my gratitude to all of my colleagues who are here, the superintendent, the Board of Education, for being willing to partner with us when we make recommendations, and all of the parents who are here as well, and the students. Because the work that you're doing, the things that you're doing on a daily basis, are having a direct impact on all of these things that are critically important. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, tomorrow, after the board votes on this, we will make this available to the public on the website so that they can go through all of the data, school by school if they would like to, or simply look at these charts again. But we're extremely proud of it, and again, I do thank the Board of Ed for your commitment to this.
So I would like to thank Mr. Scotto, as well as Dr. Altobello, for the presentations. They were very informative, and I thank you for the kind words. Dr. Altobello, if I could just ask for the HIB training and the HIB programs just to be provided per school to the board, just so that we can see, I see quite a few additional ones, so I'd like to see what's, what we're offering. I appreciate that, thank you. So we're going to move on to board committees.
Wait, wait, how about questions?
Yeah, oh, my apologies. Let me start by asking any board members if they have any questions on the two presentations that we have just had, and I'll start with Mr. Canka.
No.
Ms. Byrne?
No.
Mr. Celentano?
Not now.
Ms. Harvey?
I do, and it's actually also on the agenda in terms, and I know Mr. Scotto's not here, so perhaps this question could just be answered later, but in terms of the after-school programming that is being offered, there were questions from community members as to how their child can go about accessing those programs.
Yes, so each school has a budgeted amount for tutoring, and as we go through and meet with the principals monthly, or have the larger monthly meeting, we're working with them to start setting that up. It won't be at the same scale that we had over the last couple of years, but they do have money allotted for that, and that'll happen in the winter and the spring.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Ms. Stanton, any questions on the presentations?
No, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
Not a question, but I do want to point, I've always pointed out from my seat, the many variables that come into play when we're looking at data. But recently, I was at a Title I meeting at Wilson School and had this aha moment when the teacher said, you know, kids don't play board games anymore, so they don't roll dice, they don't move anything around the board, they don't count. And so some of what we're seeing variable-wise is a change in childhood, right? Because these kids are on computers hitting buttons, so your motor memory is not being developed counting squares or rolling a dice and adding the numbers, your motor memory is pushing a button on a computer. And so, you know, maybe that's a need, well, I know at Wilson, they're going to do more programming in terms of early morning and after-school clubs and stuff, but it might be something where we, like, engage the library in having a game night, because I, that was a pretty interesting observation to me. So, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Ms. Soto?
No.
Dr. McSheen?
Yeah, I just have a minor comment slash suggestion slash question for Dr. Altobello. So on the SDSS report, is it possible to include a category that is HIB total? Because I think there's value in the idea of seeing numbers of total HIBs change year to year, because it's kind of an indicator of how safe students might be feeling, or what the interactions between students is.
Yes, we certainly could break it out to show a total number year-over-year of HIBs total. We would just add the confirmed and the alleged together, put another column there, and we can certainly do that next year.
Exactly.
No issue.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. McSheen. So if there are no other questions on the presentations, we will move to our board committees. I'm actually going to start with personnel. Dr. McSheen?
Yes. So Personnel met on Wednesday, the thirteenth, last week. We had a great meeting, so we went over, we heard from Vice President Harvey about the book report that she'll be relaying later tonight. We talked about CUSAC a little bit, in that they gave us an update that they had submitted it, or were in the process of submitting it. I believe that's on the agenda tonight as well. We talked about the HeartSafe Initiative here at West, and Ms. Aldino informed the committee about the initiative, which is currently here but looking to expand to the other two high schools. And the purpose is to provide assistance in conducting safety drills with our staff, so helping the staff really be more aware of emergency health situations, and I know that stemmed from an incident that happened here a couple, was it a few years ago now? I think that was right before I joined the board, so, but great to hear something like that happening, especially as someone in healthcare. For Personnel specifically, so last month, we, I went over a little bit of a discussion that we had within our, our team about a brainstorming session we had for how we can recruit more teachers and staff, and looking at different ways to approach social media and advertising. And it was great to hear from, from the administration that last week, as of last week, they actually took a bunch of steps in that direction and looked at different ideas that we went over and came up with our own and actually started moving along. So they told us about lawn signs that were being designed for district facilities that was advertising about joining the district as staff, magnets for district vehicles that are being designed, that would basically be advertisements on our vehicles to allow people to know that we're hiring, to let them know that they should come join our, our team. We looked at, oh, they're, they're designing different promotional materials, highlighting the themes of becoming a teacher and becoming a substitute, trying to make it very clear on how to, how to pursue those two different paths. Included with them are things like QR codes and things that are kind of modern, up-to-date. There was also a current issue of Mercer County Woman's Magazine that highlighted the Join Our Team initiative, and was an advertisement there that we saw, which was really cool. And I believe we talked about this a little bit before, but we're, they were in the process of making the application process a bit easier for candidates and a little more clear on our website. So those are all great things to hear. After that, we also heard a review of the onboarding process for new employees, and we heard about the requirements that they had to go through. I'll just kind of list them quickly for everyone's information. So the requirements include completed, a completed employment application through Apelitrack, the New Jersey certification with proper endorsement, fingerprint and background checks, original transcripts from accredited colleges or universities, the ETS Praxis scores, reference checks, physical examination, the MANTO test, which is the tuberculosis test, New Jersey residency, New Jersey sexual misconduct, child abuse disclosure form, pension disclaimer, and, yeah, and the pension disclaimer form. So those were just some of the required materials that teachers and staff need to complete in order to get employment in this district. And we also heard just about some of the available, the job openings in the town, in all the schools, I believe. It was looking pretty good if I, I'm kind of, my team members can agree or disagree. Obviously, there's a few spots to fill, but it looks like we're really on the right track, and hopefully this progress really goes forward, because we're getting there. Any comments from our team members, Ms. Soto, Ms. Thorne?
No.
Great, thank you. And I also have a DCR report in my pocket from the DCR chair, so I will pull that up. So it's from Lady Cassandra Hodges-Jones, and her report is, "DCR is continuing to build a strong relationship with our district stakeholders. Our district, our second meeting of the year was held last week at West Media Center. We had a nice turnout, and the subcommittee discussions are starting strong. We do have subcommittee co-chair vacancies. Anyone interested in joining the DCR as a general member or as a chair, please email And just a reminder, DCR is the District Community Relations Committee, and it's really meant to kind of get feedback from parents, teachers, staff, and ways that we can help the district as a whole. So it's kind of like a sounding board and a great place to brainstorm ideas and try to get our, our district always moving forward in better steps, taking better steps forward. The next meeting is scheduled for December tenth, and it's at St. Elementary, the All-Purpose Room, and all the meetings are from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. McSheen. Do I have any questions on either of the committee reports from Dr. McSheen? I'll start with Ms. Soto. Dr. Farrar?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Stanton?
No.
Ms. Harvey?
No, thank you.
Mr. Celentano?
Ma'am.
Ms. Byrne? Mr. Canka?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to curriculum and instruction report, and I believe, so... Ms. Stanton giving the curriculum instruction report today?
Yes, and I am going to kick it over to Ms. Stanton, who stepped in because I wasn't sure I was going to be here in time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So our meeting met, we had our meeting for curriculum instruction on the Thursday, I'm looking, I apologize, that's the one thing I didn't have written down, the fourteenth, the fourteenth. All committee and staff members were in attendance. There were a few different things that we went over to share with the community. On the fifth, on Election Day, while the students were at home, our teachers and staff were still working, doing professional trainings. We had professional developments, both scheduled and choice offerings, for all of the teachers throughout the district, as well as block scheduling trainings that were, that were department-based on the fifth, as well as, as well as building-based for East and North on the twelfth, and West will be having theirs on December third. We also, as a district, are in the middle of our CUSAC, and for that, there is a motion number six, which will be to submit the CUSAC documentations to the State Department of Ed for self-assessment, declaration, and copy of voting motions. Number eleven is going to be to approve, I'm sorry, to approve the Center for Vulnerable Children McKenna Ventoh grant, which is going to give sixty to seventy of our students that are experiencing homelessness, health, dental, developmental, academic, and psychiatric evaluations. And I don't, I think that everything else is general, and will be covered by Mr. Canka. So that's everything for CNI. Is there anything else that you wanted to add, Dr. Farrar?
You'll see that we're doing carryover monies on Motion Seven and Motion Twelve. Motion Seven is ESSA carryover money, and, which is general education funds that Mr. Scotto uses, and the idea carryover is for special education.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton and Dr. Farrar. So I'll see if any board members have any questions. Mr. Canka?
No.
Ms. Byrne? Mr. Celentano?
Ms. Harvey?
No, thank you.
Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Dr. McSheen?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to facilities and operations. Mr. Canka?
Thank you. The Facilities, Finance, and Operations Committee met on November thirteenth at eight-thirty in the morning. I would like to thank the committee members that attended and the senior staff that was in attendance for all of our conversations. We moved right into general communications from Dr. Rocco.
Mr. Canka, can you speak closer to the mic, please? It's hard to hear you.
What?
Better. Thank you.
We moved into communications with Dr. Rocco, as, as he reported with the superintendent's report. We, a lot of that, that information was discussed in the committee with community updates. Then, we had a, Mrs. Harvey gave us a report from the, from the book, it was a book challenge report, and what she will, I see on the agenda, she will be going into more detail with that, but she did give the committee an update on what was coming at tonight's meeting. Then, we moved into our initiative items. And there was a request for a, a removal of a memorial stone at Steiner High School by the family that the, I guess the student was being memorialized. And there was apparently some, some thoughts that were going through their mind every time they rode by the school and saw the, they didn't actually see the stone, but they saw where the memorial was at. So, the, the parents requested that the, the stone or the plaque be removed from outside of the building. Then, we moved in, we also discussed the fundraiser for the Gray students, for the Phillips family, which is on tonight's agenda for approval. And we, Mrs. Atwood provided us with a draft of the budget calendar for the 24-25 budget. That calendar, it was just presented to us in a draft, a draft portion. And that, the final calendar will be posted after reorganization in January. There was an, our next item was a transportation issue. There was, there have been some, a request from parents to, to find out if there's any way that the buses in the district can have some type of a tracking device on them, which is something that we can put a request in because the majority of our buses are of a private vendor. And the dish, or the, the administration was going to reach out to find out what the options are for this task to be taken on. We also, and also, there's a, it's also on tonight's agenda. There was a bid opening for the, the award of the Phase 1 Part 2 auditorium project at North that is on tonight's agenda for approval, for the, to have that project move forward. And also, then our next item was the Grace Reynolds Dishwasher Electrical Upgrade Award. As we all know, and has been reported in the past, that bid or that job was sent out a couple times for a bid. And tonight, it's finally coming back to be approved by the board for that project to, to take place. Oh, then we, excuse me, we moved, we got to finalize, we got a, an update on the 2024 summer projects. The McGowyer boilers, currently, one boiler is in, has been, one boiler has been installed and is in operation. The other boiler, at the time of this, at the time of this meeting, was in the process of being completed with an estimated three to four week completion time at this time. The lifts in the West and the North auditorium have been delivered and installed. And if you could look behind me, that's the lift behind me for the, the West, similar to the one in North. The only thing that we're waiting for now is a final inspection from the, the state before we can put these things in operation. But they're ready to, apparently, they're ready to go, we're just waiting on the state. And Mrs. Atwood also reported that our annual budget for fiscal year '24 is almost complete and will be presented to the board in December, or possibly, possibly December, probably January, for, for board review. And there was a couple of all-committee items I'll just talk about. I don't know if anybody talked about any of them, but I'll, Dr. Rocco went over our CUSAC process that's, is, is beginning. It's a, it occurs every three years. And we all heard the report from Dr. Aldabella, the SSDS. And I don't know if anybody brought this up about the, the HeartSafe initiative. Oh. Dr. McSheen, did you bring that?
I sure did.
Oh, okay. And that concluded our meeting. Our next meeting is, is set for December 11th at 8:30 AM. And our next board meeting is tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. So, do we have any questions in regards to the finance and operation? Dr. McSheen?
No.
Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
I do, I don't know whether to ask it now or after they move the items, but I'll ask it now. On the contract awards, Ms. Atwood, can you explain what a lump sum allowance is?
I guess, want me to respond? It's within the bid, there usually is, there's two, there's usually an allowance that you put in this bid specs, in other words, for possible changes or changes in costs. So, usually, in any bid, you have an allowance. And then, this board, when we award it, approve in a different, additional amount on top of that, usually.
So, this, so the lump sum means that that, that is as much as they can go to overage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Within the bid, so every, so what it enables, that everybody has the same information when they bid. So, everybody should bid that amount plus what they feel the cost of the rest of the bud, project would be.
And how often do we, like, have to, like, give them the lump sum allowance, go into that overage?
I don't, you know, usually, we don't, we don't, the board doesn't do a change, negative change order into it.
Okay, I, I just don't ever remember seeing that on a contract, but...
It's in every bid, I, I know it's written up in the letter, right? That's why.
This one is, it's underneath, now, let me see where it is. It's on the bottom of the contract, under the, the money that, that there... Which motion?
It's in... So, it, oh, I see, you're, yes, it is there, but it's a double star, and then the amount is on the bottom underneath it. So, that's probably...
Which motion are you talking about?
So, I'm, I'm on the upgrades for the high school.
12?
12?
Yeah.
So, I see it now, it's, it's... It's a contingency, but it's, so the lump sum allowance is a contingency. Right. Okay, I've just never, I don't remember ever seeing the contingency written that way. It threw me off, thank you.
Dr. Farrar, Ms. Stanton? Ms. Harvey?
No, thank you.
Mr. Salantano?
Just a couple, couple of things, I want to go back to that GPS suggestion. I thought that the bus companies themselves had the GPSs on their buses so they can track their, their drivers, or at least know where, where they're at at a particular time. I may be wrong, I may be thinking of the Philadelphia school system, which does that. So, I don't know if our, I don't know if our bus companies do that.
They, they do have it, but we don't have access to it.
Right, internally, they can track it from their location, their offices. I think the question that was posed was, could they provide us the data so that we could then track it? And...
And also, provide that parents could get an app to track it. That was really where it started, is that, I know Ms. Harvey had brought this to my attention, that some districts, like New York City, put it in. And we had some letters from some other parents requesting this. Because we don't own the buses, we don't really, we don't have an ability to buy it. So, we're reaching out to our big vendors to see if, hey, your existing GPS system, Tony, you are correct, Mr. Salantano, excuse me, you are correct. Does that provide us an ability to either pay for or tap into one of these apps that parents then could utilize?
So, basically, a parent could have access on their phone to know, okay, the bus has left the school, I should, I can watch it and know, all right, it's entering my street now, I'm going to get my kid. Yeah.
I get it, I get it, okay.
And, and some that I've seen usually have like a geo-fence, like, it's not necessarily where they are all the time, but hey, they've left or they're coming within your, your stop.
Okay, all right, well, we're heading in the right direction, I guess. And, and just one little picky-un thing here, I just happen to be going through the, the checks, yada, yada, yada. And at the end, we have something here, it's listed as telephone and postage. And I'm thinking today, do we have that much postage that it totals $10,000? Or is that really the telephone costs? And because if it is, I, I would think, if you're asking me upfront, I'm thinking that the telephone costs are the bulk of that, those numbers. So, if that is the case, then maybe we need to separate them, like, postage is $300 and the telephone is $6,000.
So, I can't speak to the telephone costs, but I will say that we have sent out mailers to all the students in the district through traditional mail. We don't do it very often anymore, but there are certain documents that we want to make sure go to the home. But I can't, I can't tell you about the phone cost, but now at, what is it, 54 cents or whatever it is a stamp?
60, 60 something.
See, that's how recently I bought stamps, so, but it is a little more expensive. So, we've limited that, but, but we do it at least twice a year.
You might still want to think about breaking those out, telephone separate, postage separate, separate. Because if there's, and I'm not saying there's an abuse, but when I worked for private sector, that's what they did, they wanted to make sure nobody, nobody was abusing. The telephone, or there were telephones that weren't being used, that we're paying for. And it may not apply here, but I'm just thinking outside the box, that's it.
I, I can just tell you, as parents, we just got iReady scores by mail. So, that hit last month, so that would explain that.
And with the, and with the cost of postage today, I could see, I could see it, I could see it being up there. Like, this is only, I guess this is only one month, and we're talking 10 grand. I'm assuming it's only one month.
Atwood?
Okay, so, the telephone and postage is just the title of the account. So, this, I could see the vendor, is this is all postage because it's US Postal Company is the vendor. And we, what we do is we have to give them money, and then they give us, they put money or stamps on our automated machines. So, that's why the lump sum. So, we're refilling, our schools have machines, and Park Avenue has machines, because correct, we sent out iReady. We have also sent out, I know in the past, letters, the free and reduced applications, some of the schools have been sending those home as well, not just giving them. And we have been sending letters, so that is postage only. It's just the account, is, that's the correct account to put postage and telephone to.
Thank you, Ms. Atwood. Mr. Salantano, any other questions?
That's it for now.
Ms. Byrne?
I had a question on the bills list, do I ask that now or once you post it?
So, technically, we have to ask those questions when we go through agenda. Technically, let Dr. Farrar and Mr. Salantano ask the questions already. I don't want to say no because that wouldn't be fair, but I'll ask if you're okay to wait. If not, you can ask the question.
I'll wait if you want.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Kanka?
I don't have nothing on the report either.
Would you like to?
What I gave?
Negotiations?
Yes.
Thank you.
The negotiating, negotiations committee met with the, the directors on November 12th at 4:30 or so in the afternoon. We went into a caucus session for about an hour, hour and a half. And then, we all sat down and together and discussed a couple of the items that were still outstanding. I do have some news that we did reach an agreement in principle. We are just still working out the logistics of the finance, financial portion of that, of that agreement. So, I'm sure it's going to come very, very soon. And hopefully, in December, we'll have a finalized report. And so, happy directors, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. I'm actually going to move the agenda around just a little bit. I am going to move Item 5 under Committee Reports up till now, which is our Book Challenge Committee Report. Ms. Harvey?
Thank you. The committee reviewing the book Flamer has issued its report evaluating the suitability of the book to remain on the shelves in our high school libraries. In accordance with the board policy, the committee was made up of a member of the community, a member of the board, and the following HDST members, a librarian, a curriculum supervisor, and a principal and teacher from one of the schools that has the book. The committee members each read the book, discussed it at meetings, and collaborated to draft a substantial report. The report is available on Board Docs. The book has a literary and educational value that further complements state mandated curricula. The committee concluded that due to the book meeting the factors under Policies 2530 and 9130, it should remain on the shelf. The book. So, Flamer is an award-winning graphic novel first published in 2020, written by Mike Carrato. The graphic novel is semi-autobiographical. It is the story of a 14-year-old biracial boy, Aiden, who struggles with his self-identity and how he fits in at home, at camp, and at his church. He has a strained relationship with his abusive father. He is bullied as a Boy Scout. He also is bullied at school and his Boy Scout camp for his weight, heritage, effeminate voice, lack of athletic ability, and more. He is fearful that he is unworthy of his Catholic faith due to his identifying as gay. He considers suicide, but then he comes to the conclusion that he must find his value from within. He then goes on to rejoin his campers and finds validation that they had been searching for him, and thus, he did have importance to them. The graphic novel has a strong message about preventing suicide, and even gives readers suicide prevention hotlines. The book can help a teenager going through such identity crises to understand how to find their own feeling of self-worth from within, even when there are outside factors telling the teen that they are not valued. The book supports empathy and respect for others. It further supports diversity. The book is rated for age 14 and older, or grades eight and up. The book is available at two of our high school libraries. It does not circulate to any student who is not in high school. The book received over 20 awards, including those granted from School Library Journal, the New York Public Library, the New Jersey Library Association, NPR, Kirkus, and others. The National Catholic Reporter lauds Flamer for touching, its touching portrayal of a Catholic boy earnest to fit in and be good, struggling to come to terms with bullying and his own unexpected feelings for another boy. Summary of the committee's report. First, the selection and purchase of Flamer meets all of the criteria set forth in Board Policy 2530, Resource Materials, and falls within the professional discretion of our certified school library media specialists, who have the expertise to purchase appropriate materials to support the personal and academic growth of our students. The novel, based on the author's experiences as a teenager, accurately portrays historical events and attitudes from the 1990s. It is not meant to offend, but to provide an authentic representation of the time period. Exploring uncomfortable aspects of history is essential for fostering understanding, growth, and progress. While it may be challenging, acknowledging experiences of marginalized communities allows readers to work towards a more and just equitable future. Two, Flamer's literary, social, emotional, and artistic message overrides any of the complainant's objections to limited passages and individual vocabulary within the book. The First Amendment is a hallmark of students' learning experiences. Board Policy 9130 and United States Case Law require that challenged books be considered as a whole. Third, the committee found that the challenged content in Flamer does not meet the definition of obscenity or the complainant's assertion that the book contain adult content, sexual situations, vulgarity, and may... situations, vulgarity, and may lead to children in dangerous situations, especially when considered in the context of the entire work, as required by case law under the Miller Test. The committee also holds that in following HTSD policies, a resource material not serving the maturation of some students is not a valid basis to remove access to the material for all students. Fourth, based on the complainant's assertion that Flamer contains objectional references to religion, the committee also reviewed the novel with regard to district policy 2270, religion in the schools. The committee found no criticism of religious teachings in Flamer. The committee found the depiction of the character's journey to be in line with district policy 2270, which encourages the use of unbiased instructional and resource materials to allow students the room to privately accept or reject the knowledge so gained in accordance with their own religious tenets. Fifth, Flamer and other books highlighting the experiences of underrepresented characters provide invaluable resources to our students and their peers, fostering understanding, empathy, and acceptance, and support state mandated curriculum regarding diversity and gender identity, including under state statute 18A:35-4.35. The board in committing, in considering the committee's report, should be reminded of the legal analysis that had been provided by our board attorney. Mr. Carrick had explained the law regarding a school board's authority to remove works from a library. The local school boards may not remove books from school libraries simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books and seek by their removal to prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, and other matters of opinion. In terms of the rights of students to access library books, the United States Supreme Court has explained, "The right to read a book is an aspect of the right to receive information and ideas, an inherent corollary of the rights of free speech and press that are explicitly guaranteed by the Constitution." Although the complainants state the work is sexually explicit, the complainants overlook that the work has an artistic, literary, or scientific value and thus does not fall within the definition of obscenity. Every parent has a right to restrict their own students' access to a library book. Obscene material is material which deals with sex in a manner appealing to a prior interest. The portrayal of sex, for example, in art literature and scientific works, is not itself sufficient reason to deny material the constitutional protection of freedom of speech and press. Based upon all of these considerations, the committee recommends that Flamer remain on the shelves at all of the high school libraries where it's currently located and that it remain accessible to all of our high school students in our district.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. So I'll ask if there's any questions. Dr. McSheen?
I don't have any questions. I just would like to thank the committee for their work on this. I know it's a lot of meetings, a lot of probably challenging conversations. I read the book when it was first submitted, and, you know, I personally would have loved a book like this when I was in high school for many different reasons. I, and I disagree with a lot of the complaint personally, but I know it's not one person's decision, and I think it's important that a bunch of people from different backgrounds and different understandings come together and review the book. So that's why I really do appreciate you and all the people on the committee doing this work and reporting out. And I think that's, that's all I'll say, other than, thanks.
Thank you, Dr. McSheen. Ms. Soto?
No questions. Just to echo Dr. McSheen's thoughts, though, I thought, just to give a thank you to the committee and for your leadership, I thought it was extremely thorough and appreciated the overview of the complaint and really just breaking down of every section to understand what the concern was and why it was deemed, you know, reasonable to recommend that it stay on the shelves.
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Dr. Ferrara?
I will reiterate what I said initially, which is Flamer was one of the best books I read, and I too wish I had had it in high school. And I went to high school a lot longer ago than Dr. McSheen. It gave me great insight into two of my classmates and the struggles that they likely faced. In fact, I've already reached out to them and talked to them about it. I agree, and no, every parent has the right to say, you cannot read this book. I've told my kids that on certain occasions, but I do not have the right to tell other kids what they can and cannot read. And it's not circulated beyond high school. It's there for high school kids. And I thank the committee. You really did your work, and that's, that's it, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Ferrara. Ms. Stanton?
No questions. I also want to thank the committee for continuing to evaluate any concerns that our community has while upholding the right to information and reading.
Thank you, Ms. Stanton. Mr. Celentano?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Byrne?
Questions? So in the beginning, you mentioned that, you know, who was chosen for the committee? I have the original complaint here, and I'm just wondering, there are several people listed that submitted the complaint. Are any of them ever asked to attend the book review so that they can personally express their opinion?
That, that is not the way the policy is written. The policy is written that we receive a complaint, and then a committee is formed to address the written complaint.
Okay, but reading policy 9130, it does say that the matter will be resolved initially, whenever possible, by informal discussions between or among the interested parties. So that's why I'm asking that question. And what was my second question?
That would be before it gets to the committee level. The informal.
So they, so when we, when someone has a complaint, they're supposed to do it in writing, which I have the original complaint here. So that was my question. Like, did anyone from the actual written complaint get invited in to actually speak? You know, most people, I think, want just the opportunity to be heard. And I think that's where the breakdown might be occurring for some of our constituents, where they feel like they had a complaint, this was over a year ago. I think the policy also calls for us to deal with it within a month. And understandably, we are such a huge district, you know, I understand why we didn't, you know, address this sooner. But I would like to make the suggestion that, like, if people actually take the time, because this is like eight pages long, this original complaint, maybe we as a board could invite those people in and just hear what they have to say. We may still come to the same conclusion, but at least those people would feel heard. The other question I have is, do we as a board? So we, we're taking this committee of unelected people, and we're taking their recommendation, and it was very thorough, but there were some things that some of the people that wrote the complaint had other concerns. And do we as a board now take a vote on whether we agree with the committee of unelected, what they, because, you know, when people write to the board, you know, they elected us to sit here and actually make the decision. So I'm just wondering about the democratic process and how.
Sure, I'll let Mr. Carrick answer that, but before he does, a couple of things. One, I do not believe the policy states a month that it needs to be handled within. There were numerous complaints that came through, and as you can see from the report and the number of times that the committee met and the requirement that every committee member read the book, it takes time. It takes time to get together, to compile the, the discussion around all the different topics in the complaint, and then to be able to produce the report in a way that addresses those concerns. So it is not, it is not something that any of those complaints would be able to be handled in a month. So that's, that's that item, but I'll let Mr. Carrick address the other issue of the process from here.
Right, so the, a book challenge, or any type of curriculum content challenge, requires that the committee be formed and then provide a report to the board. It doesn't require that a final definitive action be taken. And so there's no requirement that the board actually take a final vote on it. It can listen to the committee report and do nothing at all, or it can take action. There is no action on the agenda, one way or the other, that is recommended or has been placed on the agenda tonight. So at present, with no action being taken, the book will remain.
Unless there's another challenge down the road. I mean, I'm being the devil's advocate.
Yeah, so anytime a challenge comes in, it goes through the challenge process, and it is possible that, to the extent that a challenge were to reiterate the same reasons previously raised, that the board could rely upon the committee, you know, a prior committee report and not have to go through the process again. That would be up to the board to decide how it wants to approach it at that time.
Byrne, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm just, you know, reiterating what has been passed along to me, and I'm just wondering if, in the future, if we get more, you know, because we as the board get the letters, you know, or we get on our emails, we, we get the complaints. And it just seems to me that we're having a non-elected committee, you know, make the decision for us regarding the book. I think it might help some of our stakeholders, if they do take the time to write a complaint, if they were also asked to come in and have an opportunity to speak, you know, their concerns when they do have the book committee. I mean, I, I as a board member, I also would like to come to the, to the committee, book committee, you know, just to hear what other people have to say. I've never been invited, and I would like to be, so I can understand how someone who put the time and energy into writing the complaint would also feel the same way.
I would say that we can take your concern back to the policy committee, subcommittee to review that.
Byrne, any other questions? Mr. Kanka, any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kanka.
Or comments.
Okay. Okay, so do I have any questions on the monthly suspension report? Monthly HIB report? Mr. Kanka?
I went through the, the HIB report, and I, we, we made this, I made this recommendation several years ago about the suspension report and how we make comparisons. I know we had a lot of student, I don't know the right word here, is maybe student challenges over the past year, past couple of years with, after coming out of the pandemic and how kids were, or students were behaving in school. And we're just trying to get back into the, into the, into the going to school every day and the challenges of trying to learn the curriculum that gets thrust upon everybody. But is it possible that we can have a, a report that, that shows where we were and where, where we're at now, or, you know, from year to year, like we did with the suspension reports?
Sure, and I'll ask Dr. Altobello, who comes out of his office, to prepare that for us. What I will tell you is through our conversations, Dr. Altobello's conversations with the principals in mind, the number of incidents are down, and that is also demonstrated through the charts he's showing. The number of days suspension may be up because, as you remember, and I've discussed at these board meetings, is we made mandatory nine-day suspensions if somebody was going to fight, and some other behaviors, vaping and things like that, which that has gotten to the students where our principals have told us that kids have talked about they don't want the nine-day suspension. We've done a lot of other things, very positive things, and put some other programs into place to address the behavior issues we said we were going to address two years ago, but Dr. Altobello can put some comparatives together.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, show where it was and where we are.
We're going to do it on incidents, because that's really the indicator.
And it'll show that, you know, in, in, in the report, the SSDS report, where some of the initiatives that we're taking may have an effect on future incidences and, and where we've been in the past, say, from when we started, like back in '22, it was, it was pretty, it was pretty rough around here, kids coming back full-time.
Right.
So I just would like to see a comparison from year to year. Thank you.
Just, Dr. Rock, a few things. On the suspension report, there is a year-over-year comparison. The HIB report, I think is what you're asking about.
That's what I'm talking about, HIB.
I can tell you, just because Dr. McSheen had asked, so I did the numbers for Dr. McSheen, and I actually handed him the year-over-year number, so I can give that to you right now, Mr. Kanka.
You don't have to, just, as long as there's something available on the agenda so the public can view.
Absolutely, I will make this part of what goes on the website when I post the SSDS, but I have a year-over-year comparison of HIB totals.
Very good, thank you. Oh, excuse me.
Thank, that's okay.
Because you, you have it broken out in schools on, if you look at the HIB report.
Yes, I can give you a total district number, year-over-year comparison.
I mean, totals versus where, you know, where the incidences are taking place, maybe, you know, we can focus more on if there's incidences in one particular area of the town, of the district, and we could, you know, maybe we can address them at, you know, a more aggressive or a different level to help, you know, curb these incidents.
Absolutely.
I would totally oppose that. I would totally oppose putting where the HIB incidents are by school, because that's...
Well, it's on the report. If you look at it, it's by school.
It's on our report. That report does not get seen by the public, and I would not want a public document showing where the HIB reports are happening, because then that sets kids up to be targets.
So you're telling me that this report is not open to the public?
That's correct. HIB reports are not open.
Now, I'm not saying the reports, I'm just saying where the incidences are, at what's...
Right, where the incidents are is not available, is it not?
If I can, if I can just interrupt for a moment, so this would be a legal question, and if it's okay, we're going to confer with Mr. Carrick, our counsel, to see if what we are able to do in the parameters before we make a decision, if that's okay with everyone.
As long as we, all right, if we can't get it out to the public, as long as we have the information, so we know where to work.
Well, we're going to discuss it with Mr. Carrick, and he's going to give us legal opinion in regards to that.
All right. Is that going to be now, or is it going to be a thought process?
No, I'm going to have him review that, if that's okay with everybody.
Is that going to be a thought process?
Any other questions, Mr. Kanka? Okay, so any questions on the monthly health report? Yes, Mr. Celentano?
Nobody else? Yeah, I'm just interested. This is a monthly report?
Yes.
The HIB report, correct.
So I'm looking at the office visits for illness.
Oh, the health report, I'm sorry. Yes.
You did say health, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
15,000 for the month. You know, over nine months, that's what, about 125,000 visits to the nurse's office.
They are busy.
Is that something?
This is everything. So I'm not sure if it counts for sports, but it also counts.
No, that's separate, that's separate.
Yeah.
That's separate, okay.
So I'm going to let Mrs. Audino talk a little bit about those numbers. We have about 12,300 kids in the district.
Before we get into that, just as an example, Plaughter has 285 students, 663 visits, and if you're telling me that's for the month, that's like nearly three to one.
Mm-hmm.
So what, what are we teaching them?
It's busy, but it includes a number of things. So Mrs. Audino, you want to just say what a visit includes?
It also includes all medicine visits, too. So if a student takes medicine on a daily basis.
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Sure, sorry. So every time a student, if they do take medication daily, every time they go, also that's included. So if 10 students take medication daily, that's included in the numbers, but our nurses are busy. So, you know, we're at, what, 12,700 students at this point? I think every month, this number goes up, and as the winter months go up, it's going to be more and more visits.
Would it also include, like, I know, for example, the nurse at Nottingham just collected socks, because kids walk to school and their feet get wet, and they have to go to socks. Does that get logged as a nurse visit?
It does not.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Celentano?
No, the number's just, it's out there, and I multiply it real quickly, it's about 125,000, 130,000 for the nine-month period. And, I mean, I understand, like Patrick just told me, I mean, you... And, I mean, I understand, like Patrick just told me, I mean, you can have a youngster getting a medicine every day, but is it every kid? I mean, I picked one of the schools with the, about the least amount of youngsters and it's nearly three to one. But that's for a month, so I understand that. So divided by 30, so you're talking, you know, a number, a number of times a day. But I just looked at those numbers and I'm saying, wow, what are we doing wrong or what are these kids not taking? Maybe eat more carrots or something. That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Salantano. So then we're going to move to hearing of the public on agenda items. So I do have the signup sheet here. Do have seven individuals signed up. Six out of the seven individuals are signed up to speak in regards to the book committee and the book challenge. I do have to say technically it's not on our agenda because we're not voting on it. So I'm, I'm just going to ask, that doesn't mean you don't get a chance to speak, I'm just going to ask if we can move that to the second hearing of the public and I will make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And with that being said, there is one, two individuals on the signup sheet and technically they are not agenda items and this is not an agenda item, but as the board president, I am going to ask the board to waive that because they are young members of our community and I'm sure that they need to get home and get ready for school tomorrow. So I hope that everyone would understand why I am going to allow for them to come up and speak on this section of hearing of the public. So with that being said, if I can have Olivia Whalen and Peyton Rude?
Good evening, Board of, Board members. I'm Olivia Whalen and
I am Peyton Rude.
We are eighth graders at Reynolds Middle School and we would like to thank you for this opportunity to, to talk about introducing a volleyball program to our Hamilton Township School District.
We, the students of Reynolds Middle School, are ready to propose the addition of volleyball as a fall sport in our Hamilton Township high schools. As passionate advocates for student engagement and well-rounded education, we believe that introducing volleyball would not only enhance our athletic program, but also provide numerous benefits to our students and the community.
Volleyball is a, is a dynamic and inclusive sport that promotes teamwork, discipline, and physical fitness. By adding volleyball to our fall sport lineup, we would offer students an opportunity to participate in a sport that fosters communication skills and essential attributes for success both on and off the court. Volleyball is a sport that can be enjoyed by students of all skill levels, encouraging participation from a diverse group of athletes.
In addition to the physical benefits, volleyball can significantly contribute to the mental and emotional well-being of our students. Engaging in sports has been shown to reduce stress, improve self-esteem, and enhance social connections among peers. With the increasing pressures faced by high school students today, providing additional avenues for physical activity and social interaction is more important than ever. By introducing volleyball into the Hamilton Township School District, we can attract more students to our schools, enhance school spirit, and foster a sense of community pride. This initiative could also open doors for future competitions and partnerships with clubs and organizations, further enriching our students' experiences. Along with that, we would also like to mention how in our conference, the Colonial Valley Conference, 67% to 87% of high schools participate in high school volleyball. Those schools are Allentown, Ewing, Hightstown, Hopewell, Notre Dame, Princeton Day School, Princeton, Trenton, West Windsor Plains Borough North, and West Windsor Plains Borough South.
We urge the board to consider the positive impact that adding volleyball as a fall sport would have on our students and the community. We are confident that with the right support and resources, we can create a thriving volleyball program that will benefit our high schools for years to come. Please take consideration to adding this to the agenda for the next board meeting.
Along with that, we would also like to pass out a sample of petitions and a sample of the letter that we have spoken.
Yep, if you can actually give it right over here. So I would like to thank you both for coming up and speaking and bringing this to us. Again, normally that we do not comment on public comment, but this is something that I'm going to ask Dr. Rocco to address.
Can you both come over here a little bit, because I'm sorry, I've talked to both of you, I couldn't see you around the corner. So thank you both for coming up here and speaking and waiting this whole time to talk to us. So we really appreciate you doing that and your parents doing that with you. Two things, one, I meet every other month with our athletic directors and we actually have had conversations about where volleyball can go as a sport at the high schools. I don't want to get you too excited about that right now, but we are talking about, does it have a place? If so, when is the timeframe associated with that? So here's what I'd like to ask you to do. If you can go over to that table over there, which is my senior staff, give them your names and your email, your school email addresses. We will stay in contact with you about this issue, okay? And if you have other material or other things, you can email it to us too. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to the agenda items. Dr. Farrar, can you take us through curriculum and instruction?
Sure. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I move items one through 12.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any questions on curriculum and instruction agenda items? Mr. Kanka?
No.
Ms. Burn?
No.
Mr. Salantano?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Harvey?
No.
Stanton?
No.
Dr. Farrar?
I would like to read the gift donations. Donors Choose, through Donors Choose, North High School Nottingham got manga titled books. The administration building got food coupons through Texas Roadhouse. Klockner Elementary School through Donors Choose got student clothing. Robinson Elementary School through Donors Choose got sensory supplies. And Robinson also got, through Donors Choose, reading, games, classroom supplies. We always thank the community for, for helping us through Donors Choose and we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farrar. Ms. Soto? Dr. McSheen?
I was just curious about a little more information on item 11, which is the Center for Vulnerable Children, and how, because I think the program's going on now and this is extension of it for next year, is that?
Can Ms. Audino answer that question for you?
Ms. Audino?
So this is a program that is actually, is grant-funded and we use for our McKinney-Bento students. It's currently in Ocean and Monmouth County and they had reached out to us as an extension to offer some evaluations, some immunizations of our students that are homeless. So they currently have only had a few students that were accessing the grants through Monmouth and Ocean, so when they reached out to us, they were hoping that some of our students could also access the services.
And this is like, I don't want to say like healthcare, but it's like a program to help deliver healthcare more effectively?
Correct. So they'll do some immunizations, they'll also do some evaluations if necessary, so child study evaluations if that was necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. McSheen?
No, thank you.
Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call?
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes, but abstain on number two.
Ms. Soto?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Burn?
Yes.
Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Mr. Kanka, can you take us through finance and operation?
As per recommendation of the superintendent, I move finance and operation items one through 13.
Second.
Do I have any questions on finance and operation agenda items? Dr. McSheen?
No.
Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
No, I had mine answered, thank you.
Ms. Stanton?
No, thank you.
Ms. Harvey?
No, thank you.
Mr. Salantano?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Burn, I know that you had a question before.
On page 17, motion nine, Bill's List, Awad Anadiyetti, is that a company? Can you, I just need a little more information about what that is.
Do you want me to answer that?
Ms. Atwood?
Yeah, that's a transportation company's name.
That's the name of the transportation company?
Yes.
Is that total for just that one month?
Yes.
You know, how many times we're taking the students back and forth for that amount?
I don't know the specific routes, so it will be every day, back and forth every day, but I don't know the routes. I don't know, Marta, if you're familiar, there are special ed transportation routes. It's 17, it doesn't give the school, I don't know how the school it is, but it's October and September, three are for October and one is September, but they could be different bids or awards at different routes, but it's the same company. I would say they're different routes because they're different, three different PO, purchase orders. It's MKV, McKinney-Bento, yeah, so there's some McKinney, two are McKinney-Bento and the other special ed transportation.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Burn?
No.
Mr. Kanka?
I just have a request. I was looking over the, the food service financials, the complete report there, and I would like to see a little bit more detail given to the board. It basically compares collections from year to year, but it doesn't give us any, any cost comparisons like we were receiving last year with, with Aramart. So I would like to see them expand a little bit more on that, on that particular aspect of the report. I mean, the food looks great when you look at the pictures, but I would like to see some numbers.
Ms. Atwood?
Yes, I have asked them to do that. I've asked them before we had the bottom line of how the revenues and expenditures were doing each month. I get that, I have that detail, but it wasn't in here. They said they will add that next month as well as the student debt numbers. Those are two numbers we used to have.
That's fine. And as far as the debt numbers, I don't know how our, our word that got out to the parents on getting these applications filled out, I don't know if it was better this year versus last year. But again, I'm going to reiterate that we, we need to get these applications filled out because if your, if your child becomes eligible, say in February, then the district is responsible for everything up to that point and we can't get that money back. So it's very important that the, the students get these applications filled out as soon as possible and it will, it'll reduce the debt on those, on that, the food service program, so.
Just a comment, if you look, it does appear that our efforts this year have been successful because there's $110,000 increase in the meal voucher reimbursement from 2023 month in October to this month in October. So I think that it does show that all of those efforts did pay off somewhat.
Well, we'll be able to tell when we see the debt.
Yes.
And that's not, that's not presented in this report.
But our sales are up?
Sales are up, meals are up.
Yep, by a lot.
Our stu, but our student population's also up too. So I would just like to see if that, that number is either holding steady or it should, and as students leave the district through graduation, we're really stuck with the debt of those students, but it should come off of the, the final number as they leave for that report, for the report for this year, so. I would just like to see in the report so the whole board can view the, you know, what we're spending, what the costs are versus what we did last year.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka.
That's all I have.
Seeing that there are no other questions, Ms. Atwood, can you roll call, please?
Dr. Farrar?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes, to all, except for on number nine, I'd like to recuse myself from page 57, purchase order 2503940.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Burn?
Yes, but on motion nine, I'm going to abstain, page 59, invoice 890126, invoice 892810, invoice 891331, and invoice 895110.
Mr. Salantano?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Dr. McSheen, can you take us through personnel agenda items?
Yes. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I move personnel items one through 16.
Second.
Do we have any questions on personnel items, agenda items? Mr. Kanka?
No.
Ms. Burn?
No.
Mr. Salantano?
Explain to me, I think I know the answer, I think we did this a while back, but I want to make sure. I'm looking at the unused, the reimbursement for unused days. These are not people who have retired, am I correct? Is this a sell-back, a buy-back?
What item number is that, Mr. Salantano?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Number 11.
I think, yeah, it's 11 and it's A, B, C, D, whatever it is.
These are retirements.
They are retirements.
All three of these are retirements. In the bottom, in the right-hand column, it'll tell you that they're unused, unused vacation days or sick days, and then it tells you retirement.
Oh, there it is, okay, it's in parentheses. My bad.
Two retirements, one resignation.
Oh, one resignation, I'm sorry, I saw the first two as retirement.
Okay.
I thought maybe we had, we had an agreement one time where, you know, I could sell so many days back as long as they didn't use, I don't know if we still do.
Some agreements have that, not all.
We don't, okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Salantano?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Harvey? Ms. Stanton?
No, thank you.
Dr. Farrar?
No, thank you.
Ms. Soto?
No, thank you.
Dr. McSheen?
No, thank you.
So I would like to recognize, we do have a retirement this evening, 26 years service to Hamilton and educational assistant at Sayon Elementary School, Wendy Culver. We wish you all the best in your retirement and we thank you so much for your dedication to Hamilton Township. Ms. Atwood, can you take us through roll call?
Dr. Farrar?
Yes, on everything except six, B1, I abstain.
Ms. Harvey?
I abstain on number three, B10, number 15A, numbers 734, 841, 842, 875, and 935, and number 15B, number 155, yes to all.
The rest.
Mr. Kanka?
Yes.
Dr. McSheen?
Yes, to all, except abstain on 15A, number 25, and 15B, number 73.
Soto?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes, to all, except I need to abstain on item 7A.
Burn?
Yes.
Salantano?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're going to move on to other business. I will start with Dr. McSheen, is there anything that you'd like to discuss under other business? I will start with Dr. McSheen. Is there anything that you'd like to discuss under Other Business?
I would just like to say that I'm a big fan of volleyball, and I loved it in high school and college. And I'm here for it. Unfortunately, my, my height kind of kept me from going, but, you know, great sport, just saying that.
Thank you, Dr. McSheen. Ms. Soto?
No.
Dr. Ferrara?
Uh, no, thank you.
Ms. Stanton?
No, thank you. I do want to wish the community a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope that everyone enjoys time with their families.
Ms. Stanton. Ms. Harvey? Mr. Salantano?
I kind of agree with Jason. I had a granddaughter play volleyball, and I, I know what it's like to try to figure out what the heck they're doing. I mean, I, I do understand the game, but it's like, I guess it's invigorating and, and healthy for the, for the youngsters. Basically, I, I guess I've only seen the women play. I don't think I've seen the men play volleyball. But my point is that I've been an advocate since I've been here for middle school sports, and we do have some of that in our middle school, and I think, as I, I do believe we have volleyball in middle school. So it would be, it would be a nice transition to the high schools. And, and things have to take into consideration. You need a coach, you need a salary for them, et cetera, so, but that's all. I agree with you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Salantano. Ms. Byrne?
Well, I too want to wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving, and everyone here in the galley as well, for health and happiness for everyone.
Mr. Kanka?
I also do have to agree with Dr. McSheen. My daughter, who went to this district several years ago, she still actually does play volleyball with her adult friends now, and, and she really has a great time. Getting up in the morning's a little bit more difficult because she's a little older than when she was sixteen, you know, eighteen, but she, she, I think it's a, it's a great sport. You can virtually stay out of trouble and not get hurt unless you're really, really an aggressive player, but I think it's a, it's a good thing for the district. And, and it's, you know, you never get rained out, so. It's like you play on the beach. Exactly, so, and I also would like to wish everyone a happy holiday and enjoy being with your families and put all your politics aside and just have a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Kanka. So I'm going to have to agree with my fellow board members. I am looking forward to the continued conversation in regards to volleyball. So Dr. Rocco, you can keep us, mind keeping us posted. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to bring that here to Hamilton, and I think we would have a lot of students that would enjoy that. I also would like to just discuss under Other Business. It is November, and we, I just want everyone to be able to plan accordingly. We do have reorganization meeting in January, and I just want to see if we can get something scheduled now so that everyone is able to check their calendars. We're trying to look for January second at a 5:30. Didn't know if everyone was available January second, 5:30. We can kind of revisit this in December, but I just kind of wanted to put it out there to see if that was an item. We do have our, the elected board member here in the audience, so I will ask if she could check her calendar as well.
April first.
April.
April first.
I'm good.
Okay, so I just kind of wanted just to ask everyone to take a look at that, and then we'll, we'll revisit. If for some reason that date does not work for everyone, reach out to me via email, and we'll work with the office to see if there's another date or time that works for everybody, okay?
What's the, what's the deadline for that? Is it the sixth or the seventh?
The seventh, I believe. Mr. Carrigan, is it the seventh, January seventh?
We must do it by?
Yeah, yeah, January seventh, seven days.
It only gives you.
This is the way the calendar falls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six, seven.
Are they business days?
Yeah.
That include weekends?
Yeah, the week is that?
Yeah, so.
It's the Thursdays.
Second is a Thursday.
The Thursday.
It's not business days, it's calendar days, I believe. Again, just wanted to put it out there. Everybody take a look, let, if you can, just get back to me to see if it works. If it doesn't, we'll take a look at the calendars, okay? Thank you. Anybody else for Other Business? So at this time, we're going to move on to Hearing of the Public on School-Related Matters. As I did say, for the first Hearing of the Public, I'm going to start with that list first. I thank everyone for understanding and being patient and understanding why I did waive it for our young community members so that they can get home and get ready for school tomorrow. So I do have to ask, we have, we have nine individuals, so I am going to have to ask the board if you can please, a motion to extend Hearing of the Public so that everyone has an opportunity to speak.
I'll move.
How many minutes is that, Mrs. Thornton?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
F-hour. Probably be more.
Second.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
I thank you very much to the board for granting that. So we will start a Hearing of the Public. As I said, I'm going to start with the first list, which is Amy Pennwell. Please come up to the microphone. Please state your name, and you have four minutes.
Good evening, board members. I'm Amy Pennwell, and I'm here tonight representing the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, or NJSEL. I'm here to comment on the reconsideration report for the book Flamer. We commend the board for following Policy 9130 and thoughtfully considering each book that is challenged. This is a time-consuming process, as it should be. A wise administrator once said that it should always take longer to take a book off the shelf than it took to put it on the shelf. The diligence and careful work that members of the committee do is important. Your school librarians make purchases in accordance with Policy 2530, which stipulates materials should support the curriculum and be suited to the varied interests, reading levels, and maturity of the students served. This policy supports strong school libraries and intellectual freedom in your district. NJSEL's position on intellectual freedom is clear. Students' right to make their own reading choices is essential to their education. Freedom to read is so essential that the United States Supreme Court affirmed it in the 1982 case Island Trees versus Pico. In that decision, the school, the court described school libraries as centers for voluntary inquiry and dissemination of ideas. Therefore, the court ruled, a board cannot restrict the availability of library books simply because its members disagree with their content. That Supreme Court ruling is echoed in your Policy 9130, which states that no challenged material may be removed solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or even offensive to some. We at NJSEL applaud your continuing to uphold that policy tonight. We know this isn't always easy. PEN America found that more than eighty percent of the challenges over the last twenty-four months, including tonight's, target books featuring characters from diverse racial backgrounds, sexual orientations, or gender identities. These titles have been challenged across many states and communities. The tactics used to challenge these titles, which include using the false frame of obscenity, demonizing library staff, employing exaggerated claims of inappropriate content, and repeating isolated passages out of context, completely ignore the larger value of the work. The value inherent in contemporary young adult literature is its ability to allow readers to see themselves and others from all walks of life. Limiting students' exposure to such diversity is not only harmful, it is educational malpractice. Your reconsideration committee report tonight contains a thorough review of these points, and I won't take up meeting time repeating them here. NJSEL emphasizes that the school library is a place of voluntary student inquiry. No one is required to read any book, and not every book is for every student. NJSEL affirms every parent has the right to exert authority over their child's reading. Mechanisms exist for parents to assert their authority, including establishing and reinforcing expectations at home. But no parent has the right to make those decisions for other parents or for all children. Congratulations on a well-read report, and we appreciate your diligence and attention to this matter.
Thank you. John Mukha?
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Mukha. I'm a lifelong resident of Hamilton Township. I am not a paid lobbyist for any special interest groups, speaking only for members of our Hamilton community that I happen to know and have worked with on these challenged books. We are only asking for due process according to 9130, which everybody quotes here. You did not get that. There was no informal discussions. And, you know, the committee, let's just cut through the nonsense here. Dr. Rocco has the authority to appoint anybody he wants to a committee, and he chose not to appoint any of us, much less inform us that there is a committee. I think it's wonderful that people from outside our community know full well to be here tonight, when I only learned of it by glancing at the agenda yesterday to see that it was even on the agenda. So if this is such a great thing, why all the secrecy? Why all the political maneuvering that goes on here and behind-the-back treatment instead of actual due process? Now, I don't know how this book got on the shelf in the first place. I guess the librarian picked it out, maybe was sent by some company to say this book has to be on the shelf. So we're going to all stand up and be afraid to take the book back off the shelf if we as a community decide it's not what we want on our library shelves. That's ridiculous. Now, as far as the book goes, yes, there is good content in there for somebody going through the challenges of growing up in today's world, no doubt about it. There are also serious flaws, vulgarity, anti-Catholicism, and a few other things. And if you're going to tell me this is the only book that exists in the world that can help a young child, an adolescent, get through adolescence better, and there aren't better books that don't have these flaws, then I, I think there's something wrong here. So once again, we've gone down the same path. We're not going to have any discussion tonight because the remainder of the group here is going to tell you how great the book is. Now, maybe we could have had that discussion on an informal basis long before the committee was appointed. But as I said, exactly the same thing in July, it doesn't happen here. It's no great feat to read this book. It's a, it's a comic book, it's a graphic novel, it takes less than an hour. So don't tell me about all the hard work it takes. There's nothing to that. So why don't we just try to think about doing something differently the next time we have a sensitive issue, which, yes, it involves sexual preferences and all the other things, because those are the sensitive issues. Otherwise, our community is in agreement on ninety percent of what's going on in our schools here. You're doing a great job. But here we have a disagreement, and it's not being handled according to, it's not being handled according to 9130, if you read it. It's Dr. Rocco appoints a committee, it's done in secret, all of a sudden it shows up on the agenda, and then you present a fait accompli with exactly the same thing that you said about the bleuest eye the last time. So it's not a hard thing just to copy and paste the name of this book into the same basic arguments you made the last time. And we've never been invited to partake in any of it, never been considered, and have been disrespected every step of the way. I think we can do better as a Hamilton community, and let's solve this among ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Guy Philabrown?
Name is Guy Philabrown. I've been a resident of Hamilton since 1986. I'm going to be one of those people that thanks the Ad-Hoc Committee for their work that they did on this book. I came here tonight thinking that I was going to be in an argumentative state with everybody. I realized that the people who challenged this book find that its content offensive. However, what I think is more alarming than that is that it appears the majority of the book challenges target one group, the LGBTQ community. And I want people to think about how that must look to a teenager in that community that someone in their community finds their very existence so repugnant that you want to erase any literature that recognizes them. What kind of message does that send to that child, to that teenager? The author of Flamer, Mike Curato, has said, as it was mentioned by the committee, that this book is about suicide prevention. In fact, he provides information about suicide hotlines in the book. That alone is reason enough to keep this book on the shelf. If you prevent one of your children from committing suicide over this issue, then it's well worth keeping the book on the shelf. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Turanisik?
I'm Michelle Turanisik. I'm a Hamilton resident. And I too came here thinking that I would need to say some negative comments about this report. But I thank you for all your hard work, and I am in general opposed to book banning. And in this particular book, which I read, I believe it would be a resource for kids going through the same type of thing the character in this book went through. We, in our community, we are not all the same. We should be embracing the differences between us instead of pretending they don't exist. That's what I have to say about that point of view. And I also see a lot of discussion at these meetings about how the kids aren't meeting standards. But I see that you're really trying to seriously address this issue. And I wonder what we in the community can do to be part of that solution instead of being complaining about it and being a problem. Thank you. And I will address that with the board members directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline Aversano?
Thank you. My name is Caroline Aversano. I am a resident of Hamilton Township since 1976. I am also a professional librarian who was part of NJLA's Why Young Adult Services section that read Flamer several years ago and added it to the list for the Garden State Teen Book Awards. Several librarians who serve youth across the state felt it was important enough to add to the Garden State Teen Book Award list, which teens across the state vote on. It is a list for them that they choose. I thank the reconsideration committee for their work, and I thank the board members who have read the book in full. I encourage the rest of the board who have not read the book in full to read the book. As early as a elementary school, some of our students begin to question their sexual orientation. LGBTQ students deserve to have access to books about their fears, struggles, and inner turmoil about life, friendship, love, and identity, just as any hetero normative child. Mark Curato has written a book for them, and it should remain on the shelf. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Paulino?
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Paulino, Hamilton resident and taxpayer, and I'm also Recording Secretary for the Mercer County Education Association. I just really want to thank the Book Committee for their hard work and their diligence in preserving the diversity of our bookshelves. It is, it is. But the one problem I have about, that everybody's having about the schedule is whoever's making up the schedule has no idea how much work is done in elementary by the teachers on their own time. They need to come in and see for like two to three days how much work these teachers do on their own time. At least one workshop should be for the teachers to stay in their classroom and be able to do all the things they need to do instead of four workshops where they were learning things. Three would be fine, the fourth one needs to go to them. The unit math tests, they have to mark them, of course, record them in their grade book, but then they have to send them to the head office, which takes time. Now, if you have twenty kids, and there is fifteen, like the one teacher had, twenty kids and fifteen problems, that's three hundred problems they have to mark. And then they have to record them and put them in their book. How many you got out of fifteen? Thirteen out of fifteen, fourteen out of fifteen. But what you have to send to the head office is what each child did on every single individual problem. So the teacher had to send three hundred grades to the, to the head office, which took one hour to do of her time to send them there. And it's in this linket, which we don't use. Then you also have the foundations reading program, which has to be sent after each section, and they have to mark it, then they have to send it here, which takes time. That's, those things there. Plus, they have their own individual things, such as the kindergartners, that they make special projects for them to do to inspire them. But you have to cut everything out, like they were doing suitcases, right? Ideas, you write about, my ideas in my suitcase. You know, what idea do you want to pull out of your suitcase for this lesson? And I cut them out, forty-five minutes to cut them out. I mean, that's just one thing, and they do this thing every week. Weekly Reader. Weekly Reader sends four the whole month together instead of separately, and twenty minutes to separate the weekly readers. This all takes time. So it would be nice if the teachers could have one workshop to do their stuff, their Duolingo boards, their grading, and even to talk to, about their grade partners about what they're going to do for like Thanksgiving project. It was the beginning of the month. What are we going to do for Thanksgiving? They need the time. So please give them a break and give them one workshop that they can work on their own. And, um, on that note, and give them a chance that they can finally breathe and be able to do and relax and not have so much stuff to do at home. And on that note, I'd like to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, and if you give the teachers their own workshop time, they'll have something to be thankful for. And congratulations also for finally putting up on signs on how to find our way to the meeting. A-plus on that.
Thank you, Ms. Clonak. So, Ms. Clonak was the first person that was signed up on the second hearing of the public. I do have two individuals that, um, have signed up that were also on the first hearing of the public. I am going to call you up because I did move, um, the first hearing of the public to the second. So I will ask Mr. John Muka. Okay. Lisa Lenkowski?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to put on my hat as a member of the Hamilton High West Band Parent Club, and we are very proud that the Hamilton High West Marching Band won third place at the state championship last month and second, scored their second highest score in school history. And I would like to ask the board to take a look outside the doors right there. And they lead out to a number of very steep steps that the band and the Band Parent Club have to use to bring out heavy equipment, instruments for practices, games, and competitions. And we appreciate that this lift was just put in for the stage. If there's any way to remedy this for the band, it would really be appreciative, especially because our backs and our knees are not getting any younger in time for the August twenty-twenty-five season. So that was my ask on that one. Now, switching over, um, thank you for the thorough explanation on the book challenge and following Policy ninety-one thirty. While sitting here this evening, the Speaker of the House has banned trans women from using the female bathrooms, lockers, and gyms for our first trans, uh, person in our Congress. So books like this are going to be needed now more than ever, in my personal opinion, so thank you for that. And Hamilton Township Community Supporting Education, who hosts the annual meet-and-greet every year for the Board of Ed elections, uh, we would like to extend our congratulations to Stephanie Williams, Dr. Farrar, Richard Kanka on their election and reelection win to the Board of Education starting in January twenty-twenty-five. It will be lovely not having board members threatening physical violence to members of the public in the upcoming year. Wishing everyone a fantastic Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Turanisik?
Okay. So that does conclude hearing of the public at this time. Uh, so I would like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you have a wonderful time with your family and friends, and that you have a lot of things to be thankful for. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.[1637.73]